Good evening. It is Monday, February 24th at 5:30 PM. I called this committee of the whole meeting of the Lansing City Council to order and asked that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Hussain, councilmember Wood, councilmember Spitzley, councilmember Dunbar, councilmember Jackson, councilmember Betts, councilmember Garza.
Quorum is present. I need a motion to approve the minutes from February 10th and February 17th to 2020. Vice President Hussain.
I move for the approval of the meeting minutes from February 10th and February 17th as presented.
It's been moved by Vice President Hussain. All those in favor, please say it. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. In looking at the packet, if I could get, I have no problem voting on these, but page four of five was the last one on here. I do not have a page five.
Oh, which month? Which date?
For February 10th.
I do. Oh, no.
Okay. The way they were copied is I have a copy of the agenda. Okay. No, you've got four of five and you don't have five either. So, okay.
You comfortable moving forward or you want to hold off?
Since nobody has them, I thought I was the only one, but apparently nobody does other than you. So...
It was online.
Because it's online. Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, Vice President Hussain, could you withdraw your motion and just make a motion for the 17th?
I will withdraw, uh, sorry, withdraw the motion for February 10th. February 17th is on the table as moved.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from February 17th, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries and we'll come back to the February 10th ones.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is public comment. Is there anybody, any member of the public who wishes to address the committee of the whole? Thank you, ma'am. If you could please state your name. You have three minutes from the time you begin.
My name is Joanne Baumann. I live at 824 West Ionia Street. I live downtown. I walk downtown often. I read today in WILX that the mayor is having a meeting regarding the two-way streets. Is that correct?
This evening, there'll be a presentation tonight.
Okay. I would like to say would be much to the benefit of Lansing for two-way streets. Not only would it be helpful for businesses, actually, I think one business probably went out because it would have been better if it had a two-way street, and that's Roma's, and they were there for decades. Um, since I walk downtown, often I see people going the wrong way. The problem, one problem with the two-ways, I mean, the one-ways not being two-ways, is out-of-towners come in, they don't know the streets, so they go speeding the wrong way down these streets. And unless you live downtown and walk downtown, you don't see it. And the reason is, in such a city size, it basically, sorry, it's like a small town, and people come from smaller towns, it is very counterintuitive to see a one-way street. Also, the traffic in the morning, because we have all these one-way streets, the traffic is funneled off on the residential avenues. So, on Ionia, in the morning, total crowd, and they're speeding, and it's bad for pedestrians. Now, across from me, there's a new development. That development is on a one-way street going out of the city, which means everybody is going to go around the corner to my stop in residential neighborhood to go east. Makes no sense at all. We paid for these roads. We should be able to use these roads to our fullest benefit. I also have an issue. Now, he is going to do a presentation which includes the safety of pedestrians. I would like to say that for two years, there is a crosswalk that you press the button that doesn't work during the rush hour. It's at Alleghan and Butler. If a repair guy goes out there during the day, it works. Funny thing, it's disengaged during the rush hour. How do I know this? My daughter walks from my house down Butler, over, over the grass area to Alleghan, presses the button, never stops. So, why are we paying for something that doesn't work? And the same thing with the roads. We have these beautiful, at least downtown now, they're relatively beautiful, are the ones that aren't being used, the one-ways, yet the residential streets like mine aren't repaired. We have people speeding down them. We have kids, it's hard to cross Ionia in the morning. I actually fenced in my yard so I could put the dogs out, because people weren't stopping. People weren't stopping when you're in a crosswalk, because they're rushing off the expressway down MLK, still going MLK speeds. They should be going 25 miles an hour on those residential streets. And that's all I have to say, and thank you very much for being public servants.
Thank you, ma'am, for your time. Uh, we are going to go a little out of order tonight. We're going to start with the budget amendment, and I think Ms. Fryer and Jake is here. If you would join us at the podium, please. Okay. Two weeks ago, we met as a committee and received the budget amendment presentation from the administration. In the intervening couple of weeks, you were kind enough to respond back in writing your, the questions we had at the table. And before we move this forward, I wanted to put it in front of council one more, or the committee one more time, to see if there are any further questions after having a little bit of time to digest what was in front of us. So, I will open it up to questions now. Get my notepad. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. Um, this is more of a statement than a question. Um, I am reluctant to support any budget amendment until we receive the year end. So, having made that statement, when can we expect the year end?
The year end what? Financial statements?
No, the year end budget amendment that will move vacancy factor money, that will move money out of the rainy day fund. All of those are part of a budget amendment that we receive on a regular basis. And looking back at the minutes that were done in June, of June 24th, 2019, when I asked Ms. Bennett this question, she indicated that we would be receiving that in August or September timeframe, and that we would generally have that no later than mid-October. So, can you tell me where that is?
Talking about a end-of-calender-year budget amendment?
End of the fiscal year budget.
That would be part of the regular schedule, and the end of our fiscal year is June 30, so that...
I know when our fiscal year is.
Yes.
The thing is, I have here from 2017 budget amendments that we have done in anywhere from September to October that are taking the vacancy dollars, as well as any other dollars, and moving them to the appropriate accounts. You can't do that without council approval. So, my question is, where is that?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for Jake here, but since I didn't take this role over until about October, I wasn't a part of any final budget amendment for fiscal year 19. Since then, obviously, that fiscal year has closed and an audit has been presented. So, there's not going to be another final budget amendment for FY 19, as we're already halfway through '20.
By, by, by the charter and our ordinances, you have to provide one. You cannot move money from one account to another without council approval. It is illegal.
Yep. I'm not sure that we did. When the audit was presented, it also said that we had overspent. We did not have authorization to spend a additional $7 million.
But you moved money out of the revenue account to pay those bills. You moved that out of the rainy day fund and the reserve fund to pay those bills. That is a transfer. Those dollars need to come to council.
Okay. Sounds great.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will not be approving this budget until we get that information, this budget amendment. I think it's important, we do know when the end of the fiscal year is, young man. So, we understand that. And I think her question was valid. So, we do know when the end of fiscal year is.
I would like to apologize. I misunderstood the question.
So, and I also would like to...
I just want to make sure we're really clear. So, you want for fiscal 19, a final ending budget to wrap up June 30th of last year?
Oh, I guess I can answer. Uh, so, I'm looking at this budget amendment, and it actually does include the actuals of what was spent as a budget amendment. I mean, this is an overall budget amendment. We haven't had this conversation yet, I apologize, but when I'm looking at this, we may not have done according to Hoyle, but I am looking at a budget amendment here that shows the actual expenditures for FY 19, as audited by the internal and external auditor. I'm sorry, you...
Okay. I understand that, but again, you can't do that without having council approve that. And that's what I'm looking for. I want to see those numbers, and I want to see that resolution. And I'll be glad to have our staff send you 2016, '17, 2018, '19, um, and 2018, '19, so that you've got those to go from when you're looking at that.
Councilmember Spitzley, then I have a few questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, notwithstanding Councilmember Wood's concerns, I still would like to have a little bit more discussion on the income tax adjustment adjusted down. Is there a reason why the city treasurer is not here to give us an overview of that?
Well, I didn't ask her to be here.
Well, I don't, I don't know why you need to ask her to be here. We asked questions last Monday about the income tax adjusted down. I would like to, I would like to hear from her.
Sure. Absolutely.
We can bring her in along as part of the budget process, absolutely. Councilmember Spitzley, my apologies. I have some questions if you, if no one else. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I just had a question last time that wasn't really answered. It was just the reason for the police and fire departments' adjustment for the pension pay more in an amount of over half a million. Last time, I think you just weren't sure. I just wondered if anybody knew anything more on that.
So, those payments are, they come right from our actuary. So, the actuary determined the valuation of our information. So, they set the payment, and we simply choose to follow it or not. So, we took that amount right from our actuary and put it into our budget to make those contributions. Yep.
Councilmember Wood?
Just to, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but you don't choose to follow it. You're required to follow it.
Yeah. I think part of the process was when we, when we started, the budget for '20 had already been set. So, I, as far as the final amendment for 19, I would imagine that would be done in June, as the new budget was being passed. So, frankly, it was just us being new, not knowing it hadn't happened. And we can, again, we can go back and recreate whatever the numbers were for FY 19 to have it...
No, I was speaking to the actuary. You're required, when that actuary amount is passed on to the city, to fund that fully. You don't choose whether to fund it partly or not.
Well, that's not true. You do have some discretion as a council. Again, if you don't approve numbers to be transferred, I can't make those transfers. Now, clearly, it's recommended that we follow our actuary, but if for some reason we were in a position that we couldn't make those contributions, we couldn't make those contributions. I'm not, again, trying to be argumentative either, but that's why they're here, for the budget amendment, to get those approved so that we can make those contributions.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, are you all set?
Just, I guess, why is it that much? I mean, what was it that pushed it over? I know it's actuary now, but like, what was the cause that just made it so far off?
Angela Bennett had budgeted for a significant increase, as was customary for each year, and based off of old valuation information. It turned out that, as we revised our estimates according to the information that the actuaries provided us, that the cost increased farther than we increased the budget.
Councilmember Wood?
Councilmember Jackson, I'm, I'm sorry. We had the actuary actually showed up at the last joint meeting, which was on Tuesday, that went over the report. We had hoped that we would have enough notifications so that all of Ways and Means could be there. President Spatafor sits on the ERS board, and I sit on the retire, the Police and Fire Retirement Board. Part of the reason for an increase has to do with losses and smoothing, and where you take those losses over a period of five years. And so, there was an increase with that. Part, one of the other things that we did find out in the meeting on Tuesday was that the proposed increases that were expected for the next year actually have gone down by a million dollars because of the investments that we've made and the money that we have received. So, one year you might have where you have an additional money that you have to put in to it, and another year now, the projections are going to be down almost a million dollars that the city would have to put in.
So, I have a few questions if I may, if you have. So, looking at this budget amendment, we see a, my main concern is the fund balance, because that, the projection is somewhat troubling. So, over 1.5 fiscal years approximately is what we're looking at here, I see a 10.4 million-dollar reduction in fund balance. And looking at the CAFER on page 73, which I know you don't have it in front of you, but I can quote it for you, because I'll have it here. It says, "The budget variance in the attorney's office was due to the settlement of lawsuits of 1.3 million, and the variance in the finance department was due primarily to IRS penalties of 2.5 million dollars." Together, this is about 3.8 of that 10 million dollars. Can you, I know the lawsuit is a settlement that we weren't anticipating, and that's, we figured out how to book that in our revenues. Can you explain to me this 2.5 million dollars in IRS penalties?
What they were comprised of?
Yeah, what resulted in them and what they comprised of.
So, there were, there were two different reports that either weren't filed or weren't filed on time. We, the city did not submit Affordable Care Act reporting, the ACA reporting that was due for 2016, '17, or '18. So, the IRS assessed us those penalties. In addition, in 2017, the W-2, W-3 transmittal was considered late, and so they penalized us about $70,000. And same thing for 2018. So, that's how we get to our 2.5.
So, you said we, there were ACA reports we didn't fill? Are those required?
Required. Yep, obviously. Yep, yep.
So, the previous administration just wasn't filing them, and...
That's correct.
Is there any indication as to why?
Speculation has said that our software wasn't capable or able. Again, obviously, I wasn't here for that.
Okay.
Those choices.
And then I also read 1.2 million dollars of this was related to health care?
Yep. So, about 720,000 got booked into FY 19, and the other 300 got moved to this current fiscal year in FY 20. And those were related to health savings accounts that were not properly opened and funded for many years going back. So, we rectified that issue as soon as we came across it.
So, okay. Patricia?
I'm going to go to Councilmember Betts. Thank you. Did the previous administration, were they aware of these issues, or did these just pop up as you were, started looking back at things?
I mean, again, I can't speak to what they, what they knew or didn't know, but my conversations with this administration, they were very surprised and didn't, didn't see that these things were coming or on the radar at all. But again, you know, I can't speak to, obviously, certainty. But my conversations is that they were all very surprised that these, these things existed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the ACA reports, how long has this been going, how long did she not file the reports for? Was it three years?
Three years, correct.
How long has this administration been here? So...
Two years.
Okay, so, it's, it's, it's the previous administration and this administration. Is that correct?
Well, it's always, it's always a year delay. So, 2016, '17, and '18. So, the 16 penalty would have been based on 15, and so on and so on. So, it's always a year.
Well, and I'm not trying to be argumentative either, or, or try to, because this is serious to me, and I'm not trying to pinpoint this administration that I support. I just want to let you know. But my question, you know, I mean, this is, this is very serious. So, were there any, what type of disciplinary action was taken for the, for this? And, you know, it's like 7 million dollars.
Samantha, Deputy Mayor Harkins.
I would just say that our finance department looks a lot different now. And so, we have an entirely new team working in a different way to uncover all of these different issues. And so, as soon as we knew there were any issues, we have a new team.
So, I understand that she retired. So, but that's not a disciplinary action.
She resigned.
And, and so, my question is, again, was there any disciplinary action taken as a result of finding out that, you know, the Affordable Care Act reports and some of the other things were not filed?
As soon as it was discovered, she resigned.
Councilmember Wood?
Uh, I got a couple more questions. So, okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Wood?
Um, was Ms. Bennett, Ms. Bennett CPA?
I don't know. Offhand, I don't recall.
So, one of the things, if she was a certified public accountant, there are ways to file if she did not fulfill her commitment as a CPA. The second is, she has, I, all office holders and directors have insurance policies. So, are, are we going back to our insurance policies to recoup anything based on the fact that she did not complete her work in, in a manner according to her position?
I don't believe so, but I would actually ask the city attorney. I don't know if that, that's not something we've discussed.
Do you want to respond?
Yes, please.
As these issues become, or are uncovered, we are exploring all those alternatives. Yes. The insurance companies, the insurance policies are written for the protection of the city and also for the protection of the officers, as long as they're doing their duties.
Is there any hope of recovering some of these funds, either through forgiveness or what Councilmember Wood has...
Yeah, absolutely. So, right now, the team is working on actually completing their reporting, submitting all of the information to the IRS. After the three years have been submitted, there's, of course, the option to negotiate our penalties. Right now, in our audit, they're only booked as payable. We haven't actually written a check to the IRS for 2.5 million dollars. We're, it's just, it's being held right now, which is what reduced our fund balance. But certainly, as soon as those reports get filed, the plan is to definitely negotiate with the feds.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the 2.5 million is part of the 7 million. So, it's 2.5 million for the penalties. It's also the, the income tax adjusted down as well? I'm trying to figure out where, where the approximately 7 million is.
Yep. So, I get there by 2.5 from the IRS, about 720 for the health savings accounts. The lawsuit was 1.2 change.
That's right. Yep, yep.
And then income tax was down by 1.5, and then our ROE from BWL was down 1.4. So, it was a combination of both decreased revenue and increased one-time.
So, so remind me again, are we insured for the lawsuit? Why are we paying 1.5 million? Explain that to me.
This, Mr. City Attorney, the Councilmember Spitzley's question is around the settlement of about 1.2 million dollars and why that's coming out of general fund instead of insurance?
Self-insured retention is 1 million dollars. And so, that's basically an issue. Yes, that's why we're, we're looking to get better retention figures. So, the first, it's a deductible. The first billion dollars is deductible.
All right. Thank you. I just have one more question. So, I'm looking, are you, are you in the mayor's office, or where, where is your position at now?
So, the budget amendment actually has my salary transferring from mayoral contracted staff to finance. That's part of this amendment right now.
So, we, so we passed an ordinance for the chief strategy officer to be in the mayor's office, which is that 134.7. So, what's, what's, so, I'm a little confused as to how that's transferred out of the mayor's office when we pass an ordinance specifically for the chief strategy officer, which I'm assuming you are, you're, you're no longer in that position, although I just saw a press release for the neighborhood meeting tomorrow that lists you as the chief strategy officer. So, I'm trying to figure out where everything is and how all that works right now.
Yeah. At this point, I'm covering both roles, both finance director and chief strategy officer. And that's why we felt moving the salary to the finance line, is that's where I primarily spend spending most of my time right now, made the most sense.
So, who's doing the, so what about the previous finance director's salary? Where's that at? Because wasn't she getting a salary?
Yeah.
So, where's, where's her, what happened to her salary?
It's, it's a vacancy report, from my understanding.
Yeah.
It's a vacant position that's not being filled.
But if you're filling it, you're like a contract employee. So, you, wouldn't you, so why are we, why are we transferring the money from the chief strategy officer to the finance department?
You don't have to. We just, it seems...
Well, I, I know we don't have to, but I'm asking you, why are we? That's, that's my question.
Yeah. I think the, the conversation was that I was filling both roles, and there was a vacancy in that particular line, that it made sense to move it from mayor's office to finance. But certainly, we're not, we're not married to that. If it belongs in one spot or the other, either way is fine.
Well, I don't know if we have a choice, right? If we pass the ordinance and put it there. That's, that's my question.
The ordinance, I don't think is that specific. I don't believe the ordinance is that specific.
That's what I'm trying to, the, the, okay.
218, that 21 is the chief strategy officer, and the recommendation is that it works in conjunction with the mayor, but it doesn't state it's a mayor's office.
That's supposed to be in the mayor's office.
Councilmember Wood, did you have anything else to add? I know the city attorney needed to address something.
I just want to follow up on your previous question about insurance. We do have a practice in our office of notifying our carriers anytime, any kind of event happens, whether it be public liability, floods, whatever. And we did notify the carriers after the discovery recently of the matters that the finance director noted today. So, the insurance carriers are on notice.
I, thank you. And I just want to let you know, I'm not, I ask questions that I know people are going to ask me. So, if I've, you know, I'm not trying to attack you, but, you know, you'd be surprised at questions I get when I'm in the checkout line at Myers. So, I, you know, I, I need to make sure that I can answer the questions that they're asking me, because people do send me questions about the budget. And so, you know, I, I'm very, I take my fiduciary responsibilities very, very seriously, and so I will ask tough questions. So, I just wanted to let you know, it's not personal.
Anyone on the left side? Councilmember, Vice President Hussain?
Just very quickly, I mean, I, you know, obviously, it is alarming that we're looking at, you know, the potential for 2.5 million dollars in IRS penalties, and you have the, you know, the health savings accounts that hadn't been funded appropriately and things of that nature. So, when we talk about the issue, you know, being rectified, obviously, we talked about staff changes. But there's been more than that. So, in the, the spirit of transparency, can you talk a little bit about, you know, what has, has been done structurally with regards to finance, the assessor's office, as well as the treasury department?
Well, before I was here, the two departments that reported through finance, both treasury and assessing, reported to finance. Before I came, those had been separated, so that now finance and assessing and treasury are all separate departments that report directly to the mayor, specifically within the finance department. Obviously, we have Jake now as our budget director, which has been immensely helpful. And then also, we have a new controller position that would have replaced the prior, we had kind of an accounting manager, controller position, and that person resigned, I think it was in July or so. So, we have a new person, Jeff Schornowski, that's, that's holding that role. So, we have a pretty good team right now. We've been able to fill some of our vacancies that we had temps sitting in. So, those things have, you know, we're progressing along and building that team and that staff. But certainly, the three folks that are kind of leading that department are all new, specifically to Lansing.
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Harkins.
I think that Shelby is being a bit modest in terms of the controls that have been put in place as well. I mean, we're reviewing everything from purchasing cars within the city to, I mean, all of our purchasing processes, all of our check, our process, processes for releasing checks. All of those things needed significant review. And so, right now, all of these things either have been reviewed or in the process of review. And so, I think that not only have we had to have staff changes, but, I mean, the joke is kind of encabinet, who is Shelby going to come in and come down on, on Monday. So, I think we've certainly made a lot of... made a lot of changes internally in terms of processes, which has been significantly helpful in addition to having new people in those roles.
Councilmember Wood?
Under the public service line, one of the things that we had was moving 300,000 dollars out of personnel into operating for contracting, one of the questions I had asked was specifically, what is that being contracted for?
Yeah, so that's for a contract for Johnson Controls. The vacancies themselves are just general vacancies throughout the department. I responded in writing and I'm.
What will Johnson Controls do?
Ms. Harkins, you want to answer that one, looks like?
So the, the city's been working with Johnson Controls to do an audit of our city facilities to determine where we can have some energy efficiency in particular changes and some changes to our facilities that would be through, the legislation is TELP, and I cannot remember the, what TELP stands for, but basically, it allows communities to make energy efficiency improvements and then pay for those improvements with the savings in their energy costs, and so we've been working with Johnson Controls to do that evaluation right now, the 300,000 dollars is to, that part of the contract is to go through that evaluation process, however, we only have to pay the 300,000 dollars if we don't later contract with Johnson Controls to work on those energy efficiency improvements, so right now, they're doing the evaluation and they're in that process right now, and if we choose to go with them, that will be wrapped up into the savings that is paid for with, with the energy efficiency improvements.
Tax exempt lease purchase.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Wood?
Um, I would request, Mr. President, that at our next committee of the whole, that we have the treasurer in, so that we can speak to the treasurer about the income tax, and since she was here last year when the budget was being put together, I want to get her rationale for the numbers that were formally projected, whether she had anything to do with those, or whether those were purely Ms. Bennett's predictions, and where she feels that we are at this point in time.
Okay, we will make note of that and see if we can get her here at the next one. I just have a statement to say about this, I'm, I'm a fund, I watched the fund balance closely when I was on the school board or here in the, in the city council, and these numbers are alarming to me, obviously, but I do want to compliment the council on the work we did, I think, councilmember Spitzley, you brought it up, that we passed an ordinance in August establishing the CSO, and I'm not sure we would have discovered these problems without someone dedicated to it, so although there are problems, there are certainly things we need to fix and address, I'm grateful that they've been brought to light, because now we don't have to seek them out ourselves, I mean, you've, you've done a good job of bringing them to us, still troubling, and I still think we should be looking at that 4.9% fund balance as a problem for the city, and we should be working toward fixing it, but I look at this budget amendment as we either amend the budget or we make 7 million dollars of mid-year reductions, so I will be voting in favor of the motion, which I'm going to ask Vice President Hussein to make at this time.
So moved.
Got a motion in front of us to approve the fiscal year 2020 mid-year budget amendment, is there any discussion? Councilmember Wood?
I would move to table this until we get the additional information.
There's a motion to table.
Overrides.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, if it, do any roll call, I don't. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Need a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
On the motion to table the resolution for the mid-year budget amendment, councilmember Spatafor?
No.
Councilmember Hussein? Councilmember Wood?
Yes, to table.
Yep. Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar? Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Betts? Councilmember Garza?
4-4, motion fails. Now, question before the body is the approval of the resolution approving the fiscal year 2020 mid-year budget amendment, any further discussion? Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President, since that motion failed, I am going to reluctantly vote to approve, I, I, I'm just, I'm really, I'm concerned for a couple things. I'm concerned because I don't think, as, as I'm saying this, I don't know why I'm voting to approve, I'm concerned because I don't think we have enough information, I'm concerned because, you know, the income tax, I, I really would like to know how we got into that, that position, that's huge, I'm concerned because, you know, we had somebody here, and clearly, she was, you know, Angie's, Ms. Bennett's a very nice woman, clearly, she was in over her head, and the stuff that happened, to me, is, is actionable in my mind, and so I'm concerned about that as well, I'm concerned that, you know, and, and maybe something's happening and I don't know, because it's confidential, but I can only go by the information that I, that I have before me, so I'm concerned that she was allowed to retire when these serious, serious fund mishaps and deficiencies were, were discovered, I, I did not hear of any investigations that were going on about her actions or, or anything like that, and so, that, that really concerns me, you know, as we're looking at our fund balance, you know, 4.9%, that, you know, and, and councilman Betts, and I think councilman Jackson said, you know, we're headed toward a recession, and our rainy day fund is, is taking a hit, now I hope you can, you know, get, can negotiate for the 2.5 million dollars in penalties, but until such time, we have to assume that we're going to have to pay those, and so, as the budget comes up in the next few weeks, again, I'm going to be looking at it with a fine-tooth comb, I, I am not going to be wanting to see, you know, a whole lot of fluff, and I, and I'm not saying that you guys are, because I, I'm hoping that you're, you have the same like mine, but this is serious to me, and it's, it's serious for the city, and I know it's serious for everybody in here, I'm just telling you my opinion and how I feel about it, and so, you know, it's, I continue to just be floored by this whole thing and this, this whole series of events and my frustration, and so, I'm going to apologize if I, you know, took my frustrations out on you, but I, I, I'm just extremely frustrated about this whole process, thank you.
Motion before us is the approval of the fiscal 20 mid-year budget amendment, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, thank you very much, next item is a presentation from Downtown Lansing Inc. with executive director Kathleen Edgerly, we'll wait just a second and let you get situated.
So, a few weeks ago, DLI executive director Kathleen Edgerly reached out to me and said, I would, in my old role, I used to present to the city council on a regular basis to keep them informed about what was happening with the DDA, and I'd like to do that in the new role, and we arranged this update here at committee of the whole, so welcome, Kathleen.
Hold on, there we go, thank you, good evening, everybody, as council president Spatafor said, my name is Kathleen Edgerly, I am pleased to be in the role of the executive director of Downtown Lansing Inc., as a new role after serving the community of downtown Howell for the last five-plus years, it is so exciting to be back in my hometown, where I've been born and raised and had generations of family, serving the community in a multitude of ways as well, and would like to, if this committee is open to it and council, continue to come on at least a quarterly basis to provide some quick updates on activities and programs that are happening under DLI's leadership. So since starting at the end of August, when I did start, there was no staff in the office at that time, so we've had to bring on a couple of new members to our team, and very excited and humbled to be part of that team that really brings a lot of expertise in the area of entrepreneurship, design, both marketing design as well as commercial and residential design experience as well, written communications, business and residential experience, placemaking, and the list goes on, so we're really focusing on bringing the heart to the streets of the downtown district, if you will, through helping, engaging, attracting and retaining talent, as well as focusing this first year on the vacancies that we have in the downtown district and bringing light and life to those vacancies. So if you have had a chance to hear about it or maybe attend yourself, we kicked off in December, something called the Downtown Traffic Jam, and that activates vacant spaces by bringing local artists, businesses as well, restaurants, et cetera, into a vacant space for an hour of programming that brings people into the downtown or keeps them there after 5:00 PM rather than leaving during that commuting hour, and then we have our next Downtown Traffic Jam coming up March 5th, it's going to be a little bit more robust, not only will there be that local artist performance with local businesses participating, but we have Envie participating with a Michigan-themed dinner that really focuses a lot of the activity that you'll see happening up and down Washington Square that evening with an Old Town Annex, multiple Old Town retailers coming and doing a pop-up shop in the former Lieberman space, Soul Nutrition, one of our newer downtown businesses, they have a very visible front seating area, and they're going to bring a live muralist into that space, as well as a pop-up bakery and some other pop-up retailers in there as well, so live music with Jose Moore and the Corzo effect, as well as, as I said, Envie with a dinner and a couple of pop-up retail experiences, so it's going to be a very active evening on the square on Thursday, March 5th, just next week, so if you have an opportunity, just come check it out, or even thank those partners who are making this happen, it's very important to partner with our neighboring neighborhoods, other retailers, and the entire community to build that stronger sense of pride and ownership within the downtown district. And then, one of the last, more traditional Downtown Traffic Jams, we are partnering with the Capital City Film Fest and bringing Orchestra Theater Bazaar to the House of Eden Rock Space on Thursday, April 16th, and trying to activate more of Washington Square as well throughout the evening before the Lansing Public Media Center and Film Festival do a live 3D projection show on the side of the Comerica Building, so lots of exciting and creative, inspiring, different activities and really highlighting that local arts and culture scene, while, scene, excuse me, while supporting our existing bricks and mortar businesses. And while I say existing are, supporting our existing bricks and mortar businesses, I focus a lot on pop-ups so far, but we're simultaneously focusing on how to set new businesses as well as existing businesses that are opening a secondary location or expanding their retail line, setting them up for success for the long term within our downtown district, so in January, my team introduced in partnership with Lake Trust Credit Union, the Make It Downtown Lansing Lease Assistance Program, so that's providing, fully funded by Lake Trust Credit Union, graduated levels of lease assistance to the property owners and those businesses for their first year of operation, really designed and focused on removing or at least eliminating some of those barriers to entry and setting them up for success for the long term, so in that first quarter, they receive 1,000 dollars a month, in the second quarter, they receive up to 800 dollars a month in lease assistance, third quarter, 500 dollars, and then for that final quarter, 250 dollars, and that is paid directly to the property owner, and we have up to three businesses that will be approved for that program with a review team that's comprised of the Small Business Development Center, Lake Trust Credit Union, our business development team, and others, so we're really excited about being able to offer that opportunity for the long-term success of our downtown district. We are also getting creative and working with our partners at LEAP and the MEDC to look at how to support, again, either newer small businesses, but those that have served our community for years and been a part of it, so, I can't share publicly who is receiving it, but there should have been an announcement today from the MEDC, hopefully tomorrow, as their marcom team gets back into the state and town overall, showing that grant that we wrote to the MEDC to support one of our small businesses that has been serving the community for generations, so definitely decades, will be receiving over 25,000 dollars in funds to help improve their interior of their space, expand their retail line and their seating options, and we really feel this is a true testament to supporting those small businesses that don't always have the access to the capital, the way that larger corporations might, and providing value to them as an organization ourselves, we write the grant, work with them on what their plans are, make sure everything's reviewed financially, marketing-wise, design-wise, before that is submitted to the, or to the MEDC, so we're really excited about that announcement coming soon. And last, certainly not least, some big events coming up, Forks and Quarks will be Tuesday, March 24th, that takes place in the suites of Cooley Law School Stadium, so it'll be my first time experiencing it, as well as leading it, so, that's one of the few events at DLI that I've never actually experienced personally, and then the Traditional Taste of Downtown that happens in July is getting a complete refresh, again, partnering with more of our existing bricks and mortar establishments, local artists, vacant spaces and those property owners, as well as utilizing the parks within our district and just on the periphery of our district to make sure people get a true taste or flavor, if you will, of all that they can experience when coming to Downtown Lansing, and making sure that we bring in the residential experience as well as the visitor experience, and partnering with the Car Capital Auto Celebration that will take place that day, that traditionally brings in 2,000 to 3,000 people to the downtown district, that's put on by Ariel's Transportation Museum, so, more exciting news coming, I would be remiss if I didn't mention before I end here this evening, if you have a chance to stop in and talk to Weston's Cubies, to congratulate them, we were there today, they are so excited for their win that they had in Miami for the Burger Bash, ah, I should have brought olive burgers, some of their staff were taking a well-needed break, but also Casa Cheques received an award that only 40 other businesses have received across the US for providing quality customer service to their clientele for the last 100 years, so, two longtime Lansing-area businesses receiving accolades, definitely appreciate having them as part of our community.
Thank you, Kathleen, are there questions or comments from the, the committee?
I won't tell, stay tuned, social media on Downtown Lansing, or even our website, which is also going through a refresh, to make it more user-friendly and interactive.
Vice President Hussein?
So, your energy's a breath of fresh air, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
It sounds like you're doing a fantastic job partnering to support small businesses downtown and to reactivate vacant spaces and to put on events that are attractive to folks that are, you know, we want to obviously pull in to downtown, particularly as, as visitors, but we know that to truly sustain these small businesses after 5:00 and on the weekends, we need to enhance residential density, do you know right now, how many residential units we actually have downtown?
So, just based on our most recent impact report, annual report that we put out, we have about 800 units with an additional, just over 200 coming online?
277.
Thank you.
Okay, and that was actually my next question, so we have another, another 277, we're talking 600 block project.
Correct, correct.
You know what, in terms of the 800 that we have online, do you know what the vacancy rate is right now?
We do, I do not have the residential vacancy rate numbers, I will say that in cooperation with our business development team or partners at LEAP in the city, making sure that we're improving how we communicate with the residents and putting together welcome packets and making sure that there's that cross communication happening with the businesses and our existing residential base, as well as making the businesses aware of what's coming online, and making sure that's part of our narrative, as I said, with our existing business mix, so they know how to adjust their hours appropriately and any new businesses that come online as well.
Fantastic, can you give me the number for the, the units we're expecting to come online again?
277.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may add, I had a meeting last week with the Gillespie Group, and they said that their vacancy, at least just in the outfield in the marketplace, they have a 6% vacancy rate over average, so they're, they're on average 94% full.
Other questions or comments? Kathleen, thanks for taking the time, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate being here, have a good evening.
Olive burgers, that's right.
Olive burgers, nice time.
Next on the hot seat is Mr. Kilpatrick to discuss his, the future of two-way street conversions in the city of Lansing.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to give you just a little update of where we are with the two-way conversion process for downtown, for those that have been around long enough, you may remember back in 1999, we did convert three streets, Chiawasi, Ionia, and Washtenaw over a weekend, and I believe it was October or early November, and since that time, there have been discussions of converting the remaining downtown streets back to two-way, so I'll call it a two-way kind of reversion, because they all used to be two-way, and then they were, some of them were one-way, the other way, and then when 496 came in, they were converted to the one-way they currently are, this opportunity is really available to us because we got a grant from the state administered by MEDC, a 3.3 million dollar grant, that must be spent by February of 2021, unless we get an extension, which is not the plan. The current plans are to convert these streets this summer or fall sometime, variables that could impact that are the fact that we have 40 traffic signals that we have to make some adjustments to, either on the we have to make some adjustments to, either on the backside, put heads so people can see the other direction they can't currently go, or some of them have to be completely modernized. And our Board of Light Signal Crew right now is very busy being pulled off, making stuff ready for MetroNet that's putting fiber all over the place. So that's one challenge. The other thing we're negotiating with is MDOT for Capitol Loop, so Ottawa, Alligan, and a portion of Grand between Otto and Alligan, that's a state trunk line. And we would like to have them give those back to us because then we have control over those and the standards that we have to follow for traffic signals and other infrastructure are not quite as stringent as they are for state trunk lines. So we've been in that discussion for a period of about six months now. We're hoping to resolve that fairly soon, but as folks know, with the state and with MDOT, that's a lengthy process. City of Kalamazoo recently went through the same process for M43 and some other streets through downtown Kalamazoo. It took them 10 months to negotiate that with MDOT, so we'll see where that ends up. We've met with some of the kind of larger businesses downtown already. We've met with LCC, with Accident Fund, with DTMB, with MDOT, obviously because it's their roads. Capital Facilities folks with the New Heritage Center going in and with others. We do have currently two public meetings planned. On March 3rd, we have a meeting, kind of open-house style, for stakeholders in downtown, so it's primarily businesses that we're targeting for that. And then we have a public meeting set for March 31st. We have a website that will be up live by the end of the week that we'll have information on. Then we're also targeting like delivery companies and everything else to make sure that we have load zones in appropriate places. We've met with CADA because most of these roads will be one lane in each direction, so busy bus stops will need a place for the bus to pull off so they're not in the only travel lane that's there. We know that we'll need load zones because we have multiple lanes now, we only have a single lane, and so we'll need areas for loading. And we're also looking at bike accommodations. We don't know exactly what that will be because we don't have enough room to have what probably everyone who's a, I don't know whether it's serious or casual biker, would like a protected bike lane, but we just do not have the width out there without removing parking on one side and parking being a premium downtown is not our intent to remove parking spaces unless we have to. We have two consultants working with us right now. We have one, a transportation planning consultant that is working on kind of road design and what things will look like, you know, amenities that we might put in in the future, including some medians if we have either budget with this or in the future, the areas that are dead space with the center turn lane. Then we also have a civil engineering consultant working on essentially the crossover on MLK that's needed, the boulevard section there, there's some work that has to be done. And then there are right turns that currently can't be made, that the curb radius has to be increased so larger vehicles can make those turns in the future. So those are all things that are under design right now. As we get feedback and questions from the community, we'll have the information on the website and forums that people can fill out with their questions and concerns, and we will be doing information as we get through the process. So two upcoming meetings, that's our first kind of public outreach, and then once we get feedback on that, then we'll go forward with that and get a revised schedule once we have some firmer dates. And that's my brief update, but I'll answer any questions or take any comments or concerns.
Andy, could you please repeat the business meeting?
Yes, so that is on March 3rd, and we'll actually have a morning session and an afternoon session. We will be sending out a mailing to those businesses that have been targeted for that tomorrow. Again, it's open-house style, so it's not a formal presentation. We will just have our consultants there with boards, people come up and ask questions, and we'll have kind of a presentation, brief one, couple minutes, just looping, just for kind of an orientation to what we're doing there. And then the public meeting will be from 4:00 to 6:00 on March 31st. Location's still to be determined on that, but the stakeholder meeting will be at the community room at Fire Station Number One.
Community room, all right. And then when you talked about the Capitol Loop, you know, part of the thing with the Capitol Loop is the mediums that are there. If we're looking at taking back on Martin Luther King, if we're talking about taking back the Capitol Loop and being responsible for it, right now, the state pays us so much, you know, I think it's four times a year for mowing. So this would add to our cost for upkeep. That's a critical area, we hear about it, you know, runs through a number of neighborhoods taking care of that. So how are you looking at incorporating that?
So if we resolve that with MDOT to take those roads back, including that section of MLK, what MDOT does is they look at what the maintenance needs are for the next seven to 10 years, those are more capital needs, and they will give us that money. But then we also get the normal Act 51 money that we would for our roads, so we would have money and we have more flexibility if it's our own street to determine when we need to mow. Right now, MDOT basically sets how many times we can mow, that's in our contract, that's what they pay us for, and so we don't have that flexibility without going back to them and asking for more money. But with our streets, then we'll be able to include that in our current contract, and we would pay for that with Act 51 funding that we would get for those streets.
That would also, though, mean that we would have to pay, out of our transportation budget that we're getting through Tri-County, would be incorporating, instead of it being MDOT dollars, would be incorporated into our major street dollars for improvements, correct?
That is correct.
And the portion that we pay right now for any improvements to that area is what?
So it depends on the project generally.
Let's use the project that they're just working on right now.
Right, so the MDOT project that was done on the south part of MLK, we paid about $100,000 is our portion for that. So yes, we would, then that would be our road, we would be responsible for it with the funding that we received. We would also then be eligible for additional funding because that would be National High Priority Project funding, so NHPP funding, that right now only Waverly, Jolly, and Michigan are eligible for, so that would expand that amount of money we would be eligible for as well.
Okay. And when you talked about having areas for buses and delivering, the first thing I see is the fact that you're going to be taking away some parking downtown to create a safe place for the buses to pull over or for deliveries versus the fact that they're blocking a lane and everybody can go around them. Is that what you're thinking as well?
That is correct. It would be on the parking or the curb side in those areas. It would not be every single bus stop. It would be areas where there are a high number of people getting off and on, and depending on the road we're talking about, it may be only certain times of day. It may be only the morning or only the afternoon. That's something that we have to look at as we're going through the whole project.
Have you done an estimate of how many parking places could be lost in the downtown area?
We have not at this point in time. We have worked with CADA. CADA currently does not know even if they will be changing their routing, so if they change their routing, that could impact where we might need these bus stops. For load zones, they will probably not be significant as long as we allow them to use the center turn lanes like we do now for our current two-way streets that have center turn lane. We allow them to use the middle of the block for loading.
How is this going to affect the ramps? Our ramp on North Capitol as well? The one that's utilized the most is from the student's perspective, and that can get backed up is the one on North Capitol.
Right, so for all of our parking facilities, they're already making accommodations to change the traffic flow as necessary for the two-way. LCC, as you may be aware, is planning to take down the Ganon ramp and replace that with two parking structures, and that is being, both of those are being designed for two-way. So I guess the advantage right now or will be is there will actually be a turn lane that that traffic can queue in, whereas currently is, you know, it does have, North Capitol has a lane, but if it backs up to Chiwasi, you really are talking about the same distance, but traffic can come from two ways versus now they all have to come from the north. It can only come from one direction to all these parking facilities.
Thank you.
Councilmember Betts.
You know, I for one, and I think speaking from my side of town, running a healthier community, think that dismissing dedicated biking lanes is probably not something that we should be doing. I think that biking is important and buses are important. Last year, our city was, of course, designated one of the most, had the most concrete of any city in the downtown. We have a lot of parking. Why aren't we, instead of having, continuing to have the same amount of parking, building up with parking structures and allowing for more bikeability, more walkability, and less central downtown parking like we have now?
So as far as bike facilities, that will be a discussion. I'm not dismissing it, it just would come, that's a trade-off. So if you want a dedicated bike lane anywhere, not anywhere, but for the entire corridor for all of these streets, there will be some parking losses to be able to do that. So it's a trade-off, it's either parking or bike accommodations, but the widths of some of these streets are not consistent, so we might be able to have a facility in one or two or three blocks, but some other areas we would not be able to. So that's, we'll get input from people, we'll make a recommendation, and then we'll see where that goes. So it will be a discussion.
Do you know what proportion, I guess I'm just throwing this out there, what proportion of people who park downtown are from outside of the city versus inside the city? I think that's going to be an important decision on whether or not we put bike lanes down there, or down here, I guess.
I don't know as far as what percentage on-street or inside versus outside.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like that's it. Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. Before we move on to the next item, we have to go back and approve the minutes from February 10th, 2020, the fifth page should have been placed in front of you. Council, Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, and so I apologize for not catching that. When I vetted these minutes yesterday, I did so through the Agenda Center, which obviously they were part of the, so I appreciate Councilman Moonwood catching that. With that being said, I would move the February 10th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes is presented.
It's been moved by Vice President Hussein. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All as opposed, motion carries. Next item is a closed session. Vice President Hussein.
I hereby move that we recess in a closed session to consult with the city attorney in connection with the following specific pending litigation. An open meeting will have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the Lansing City Council concerning the case LE Battle Creek versus Clerk, City of Lansing and Lansing Medical Marijuana Commission, Inglewood County Circuit Court, Case Number And again, this is pursuant to MCL 15.26E.
Motion has been made. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes. We are in closed session.
I wanted to ask you, so does departure of council's internal auditor have anything to do with these financial problems?
Not to my knowledge.
So given that these...
We're talking to the mic.
No, it's okay. Let's come back. Um, given that these are issues that were addressed, I would say that we, we have a lot of issues to deal with. So which were the issues that were addressed? Was it the IRS time? Was it the, I mean, we were talking about two kinds of things, I don't know. I didn't know about the, I mean, there was, I mean, so the IRS fines, was it the reports that were failed to be filed in 2016 or 2018? Or was it the fine for assessment, the reports were failed to be filed in 2015 or 2016? Okay, because it was kind of like, in there, it was kind of like saying it's not this administration, it was there. Okay, well, so it was 2016, 2017, 2018. So the report should have been filed in 2017. They were filed in 2018. Okay, so they should have been filed in 2018. So it's not entirely the same. I don't know what happened to the, because we're not working on it. Um, so how did this seem, how did this come to light? Is it weather from the IRS? How did it come to light? I don't. Um, so the lawsuit, is that the sewage thing?
Yeah, that's the reason, the, 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 yeah. Uh, we got those out, we don't know. It depends what, it depends what we know right now. Um, so it's the sewage, um, the, it is not based on that, the IRS time, I don't know anything. There it is. Um, and the form of the sewage is, I don't know. Yes, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, so, I mean, what about, was it not similar to the IRS? That's a question. Um, in terms of associated with the IRS, I don't really, we're in a topic, um, yeah, it's, I mean, I don't know. They do it, I don't know. Um, so, I mean, you've got your internal auditor, but why not have an external auditor? The problem is that we have, so that's what we, you know, we have to, so, um, and the research filed with the IRS, if I had something to talk about, wouldn't you file the research? And the issue with the internal act, was that an issue in February? And, well, it was an issue with projections, so I don't know if they were done by, my , uh, combination of, and are you expecting that you're going to keep seeing reviews now? Because I had a chance, I was expecting to see less. Hello? Because you seem sorry? Yeah, I don't know. Thank you. No problem. It's a search for, I mean, I'm tired. I usually don't work this late. Yeah, I just hope that I can get back. Thank you. Um, anything else to add? Don't worry about that. Hi, how are you? Good. Okay, wonderful, thank you. Okay, good. Um, I'm just gonna, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I have a, I have a, no. Yeah, my, it's not you guys? Honestly, I'm not, I wouldn't be that close to you, I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with it. I just, I'm, 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 was, I 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 was, I